All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Monday, July 18th Casa Grande City Council meeting. I call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is our invocation on our Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have Brent Hillman from LDS Church to lead us in our invocation. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our dear, kind, and gracious Heavenly Father, we thank Thee so much for this great land that we live in, in this wonderful community. At this time, as we begin this meeting, we ask for Thy Spirit to be here that may be a continual place of peace, even though there are serious discussions that need to occur to help continue our community to be safe and a wonderful place to be. We ask the Heavenly Father to bless each person here, that they'll be able to utilize their wisdom and their love of their community, to properly make the decisions necessary to help our community to grow and to strengthen, and be that safe place for each person to live. We thank Thee, Heavenly Father, for the many blessings Thou bestow'd upon us. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Does he feel like it today?
Thank you, Mr. Hillman. And thank you, Lisa.
Thank you again, Lisa.
All right, let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
And then we have item C, the minutes. Do you want to do the minutes? Matt can do it.
Okay, that'd be good. Mine's all messed up from the...
Mayor McFarland, I move that we can consider for approval the City Council regular meeting minutes of July 5th, 2022, and the approval of the City Council's special meeting minutes for July 5th, 2022. And except for the record, the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of June 2nd, 2022, all as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as presented. Item D, D1, Claims Against the City.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated June 29th to July 12th, 2022.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain, Mayor.
Okay, note one abstention. Gloria?
So noted.
All right, next item is our meeting agenda. I know that we will be having an executive session tonight, so I'm going to move item N to precede item M, as in Mary. So we'll put reports just in front of item M. And Larry, you had some other potential changes here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. First and foremost, I just would like to mention, and I know there's been a fair amount of information related to the Spanish Trails West public hearing and PAD amendment that was actually noticed for tonight's meeting. That particular item has been removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant who asked to withdraw their application. And so there is no public hearing, there is no council consideration this evening on that particular item. And I am asking the mayor and council to remove item L2, which is a PAD and general plan minor amendment that is scheduled for tonight. We have found some modifications that need to be made to that, and we would anticipate rescheduling that matter for the August 15th, 2022 regular council agenda. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Larry. Does anybody else have any other, anything else to adjust on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve with so noted changes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved with so noted changes. We do have a special presentation tonight. It's F1. This is an update and discussion related to the 2022 municipal primary election. So Gloria?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Just would like to give you a brief update on what has happened with our primary election. I am sure that you're aware of, and I'm hoping that the community is also aware of, the human error that we had with the primary election, which primarily affects early voting. Unfortunately, the city of Casa Grande was one of seven municipalities that was affected by this error, whereby the city council election was left off of some ballots, and others it was included, and some of the county residents included our city election. Some very important information that I will highlight, and then if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Also, want to let mayor and council and the community know that the city staff has been working with Pinale County to resolve this issue. The county has come up front and has taken responsibility for the error, and has been working with all the cities involved in this error to provide information to our voters. First of all, what is very, very important is if our community members received an early voting ballot. It is very important that they vote that ballot and they return it. If for some reason, and we know that there was a lot of confusion early on, if for some reason a voter took that ballot, threw it in a trash can, and said, oh, they're going to send me a new ballot. If that happened, it's important that the voter request a replacement ballot. If that voter requests a replacement ballot, and it needs to be done before this Friday, a replacement ballot must be requested. If they make that request, they will get a ballot that will include all the federal, state, and county information, just like the original ballot. Again, if for any reason that first ballot was destroyed, it's important that they make that request to get a replacement ballot. Or they can actually go into the county recorder's office here in Casa Grande. If they prefer, they can walk in and they can vote their early voting ballot. Okay? Anybody who made a request for an early voting ballot will receive a supplemental ballot with our city council election on it. And it's my understanding that they, many of the residents who made a request, any of the voters who made a request, did receive them today. I know a member of my staff received it, so we know that they're in the mail already. It's important that the initial early voting ballot and their supplemental ballot be returned, not later than Election Day, which is August 2nd. Whether you stick it in the mail, whether you go to one of the designated locations to drop off your ballot, that it needs to be returned no later than Election Day at 7:00 PM. Now, if you don't want to stick it in the mail, you can drive over to the county recorder's office. They have a drop box inside, and they have a drop box outside to return your early voting ballot. Another important message is that you're going to receive two ballots. Please do not stick both of your ballots in the same envelope. Your initial ballot must be placed in the ballot that you received for that. You have to remember to sign it and stick it in that ballot. Now, you're going to get your supplemental ballot today. You must stick it in the envelope that you receive with that ballot, and remember to sign it and get it out. Let me think, what else is very... If for some reason, you know, you're a voter and you got frustrated with the early voting process, you may go on Election Day to vote. You can vote for your city election and all for all the other offices and measures. You can vote on Election Day. So very important. We do have information on the city's website. We have a link to the county's website. I can tell you that the county has been working really, really hard with all the municipalities to try to get the information out there. I went to the LNA testing that was held last week, and one of the questions that was asked, well, what are you going to do with the votes received for our city election for the municipalities on the first ballot? That was of concern to a lot of people there. And what will be happening with those votes is they're just not going to be reported. For the votes that will be reported for municipalities is going to be the supplemental ballot. And they have a separate tallying machine that will vote those. So you'll have two machines that are going to be tallying the votes for all of the other issues and measures and offices, and then you have one designated just for municipalities. And those are the ones that will be reported.
Right. So it's super important to make sure, if you have family members, you talk to them and make sure they understand they need, and they're going to do early ballot, they have to send in both early, both ballots.
Both ballots.
The city ballot and the federal...
Separately.
Yeah, separate.
Mail them separately.
Yes, mailed separately. They'll come with their own envelopes, and they need to be sent in, but both need to be sent in.
Both of them need to be returned.
Even if your first ballot was correct.
Correct.
Meaning it had the city information on it.
You need to, yes. If you received your initial ballot and it was correct, it had all of the offices, including the municipality, and if you happened to vote the municipality, voted on the municipality election in your first ballot, stick it in the mail. You're going to get another ballot. You should have got it today. If you don't, you'll get it tomorrow. You need to vote the supplemental municipal ballot. Ours is city of Casa Grande, and that is the ballot that will be processed, that will be counted.
And if you're totally frustrated, just go to the precinct.
If you're totally frustrated, that is correct. If for any reason, as an early voting, if you received an early voting ballot, and if you just got frustrated with the process, you may go to your voting, designated voting precinct to vote, and you will be eligible to vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, can I ask Ms. Leah just to outline, just briefly, the process if you did not get an early ballot and are typically those individuals that will vote at the poll? You want to describe that quickly, Gloria?
If they were on the permanent list to receive an early ballot.
No, no.
If you did not, right, if you did not, if you did not request an early voting ballot, you are not impacted by this error. You just go to the polls as you normally do, and you're going to receive two ballots. You're going to receive a ballot with all the state, federal, county offices, measures, and then you're going to receive another ballot with the city's election on there. And this will happen for all of the affected municipalities. So if you go on Election Day, you're going to receive two ballots.
Right. Anybody?
Just to comment on the ballots that they had a press conference today, and it was, the new ballot was very distinct in difference in the regular one.
That is correct. They have put an orange colored stripe on the top for the municipal ballots. So they are, they try to do something distinctive from your first ballot that you received, excuse me, that you received. So it has an orange stripe on it.
Okay.
And again, please, if anybody has any questions, feel free to go to our website, feel free to go to the county's website, feel free to call us here at the city clerk's office.
Great, thank you, Gloria.
Really quick, Mayor, as we all know, so many people are concerned with fraud and everything else. So I just want to make sure that the public is comfortable that the tabulations are really going to be separated. I mean, it's just confusing. Like, I was one that got the corrected ballot, and so filled that, filled that out. So, you know, of course, I feel like I'm voting twice, you know, for the municipal. So I just want to make sure that the public understands the systems that they have in place to make sure that those aren't double counted.
And at the LNA testing, they had a representative, Mr. Hampton, who was there, who is part of the team for the tabulating machines, and he was able to explain the entire process. One of the important key statement that he made was, these machines have already been certified by the state, Secretary of State's office. So they're not reprogramming the tabulation machines because they've already been certified. They are just not going to report if you got a correct ballot and it had the city's election. They'll be tabulated. They're just not going to report those results. Instead, they're going to report the results from the tabulating machine that is designated. So they just, they just didn't want to go back and if, compound the error or anything like that. So they will be counted, they're just not going to report on it. And Mr. Hampton has been working with this company, tabulation company, for a number of years. He's from Casa Grande, so he was, well, he's got a lot of knowledge on that, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Gloria.
Thank you.
All right, move on. Item G, which is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine, matters, and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who wants to remove any of the consent agenda items? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, then...
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton. Councilmember, Councilmember Huddlestead.
Yes.
I have Mr. Hampton on my mind here, if I can remember.
I thought we had a new one.
Oh, my gosh. Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item on our agenda is item H, which is public comments. This is the time in the meeting when we'll open the floor. And if there is any, I don't have any comment cards, so if there's someone here in the council chambers who would like to address the council, this is your opportunity. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, give us your name and address when you come up, and also understand that we cannot have a discussion on what anyone brings up, but we can give staff a direction to follow up with you at a later point because it's not an agendized item. Anyone? All these people, and nobody wants to talk to us. All right, seeing no one, then I'll close the floor, and we will move on. Move on to our Ward of Contracts. The first one is I1. Mr. Range?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff is asking the mayor and council consider an ordinance approving the authorization and sale of city-owned real property generally located at the corner, the northwest corner of Quartzon Road and Thornton in Casa Grande, Arizona. On January 27th, 2022, staff accepted a letter of intent from IDM Apartments Phoenix LLC for approximately 12 acres of land owned by the city of Casa Grande, generally located at the northwest corner of Quartzon Road and Thornton Road. The LOI provided a purchase price of approximately $2,090,000, which was established based on a net square footage of 522,720 square feet with a pricing of $4 per square foot for the purpose of constructing an apartment complex on the site. In early July, the LOI was amended to include approximately 20 acres versus the 12 at the same pricing of $4 per net square foot, which would result in a price of approximately You may recall, we had asked the mayor and council to remove this item, and that was the primary reason from the last, at the last council meeting. Staff did evaluate the offer against the current market conditions and found that $4 per square foot was a very competitive offer, that the current land use of community corridor would allow a developer to entitle the site for multiple, multifamily residential units, as well as evaluated whether the site was one that would be utilized by our entity in the near term. After thorough review and discussion, it was determined that the site would be better suited for private development versus a governmental use. A bit of a history on this particular item. In March of 2011, the mayor and city council voted unanimously to acquire 84.5 acres of land from Enterprise Bank and Trust in the amount of $635,000 for the purpose of utilizing the site for future recreation or wastewater use. The transaction ultimately closed in July 2011. At the time, the goal was to acquire the parcel directly north of the site and south of the Dave White Park for the purpose of constructing future park amenities. The city was not successful at acquiring the parcel, essentially creating a barrier between the two holdings. The proposed land purchase agreement, which is before the mayor and council this evening for the 20 acres of the 84.5, has been attached for your review. And if I can, just spend a few minutes outlining the key provisions of the agreement. Number one, that $50,000 of earnest money will be deposited into an escrow upon opening escrow. The earnest money will become non-refundable once the due diligence period of 90 days from the opening of escrow has elapsed. The purchaser may extend the due diligence period for one 30-day period. The closing of escrow for the site and transfer of the property shall occur within 180 days after the due diligence period. At the time of closing, the balance of the purchase price, approximately $3,434,800, shall be made by the purchaser to the escrow company. No later than 11 months after the expiration of the due diligence period, purchaser shall secure permits necessary to construct, start construction of the development. And one last final element was that we added one condition to the LOI as well as the purchase agreement. That condition has been added to the agreement by the city related to the fact that the site is adjacent to the city's water reclamation facility. It suggests the water reclamation facility is utilized to process sewer influent. As a result, odors or smells may be prevalent. I guess just one additional item, Mr. Mayor and Council, that I'd like to add is on the $4 per square foot. As we evaluated this particular site, we did look at the, at comparables that were like situated, and essentially what I mean by that is that there was infrastructure, utility infrastructure that was adjacent to the site, and found that that $4 was very comparable in the market. I would add just one additional item, Mr. Mayor and Council, and that is that should the mayor and council need to, to go into executive session to talk about any of the legal proceedings or provisions of the agreement, that option is available to the mayor and council this evening. And with that, I would simply suggest that staff is recommending the mayor and council approve the ordinance entering into the land purchase agreement with IDM Phoenix LLC for the purpose of selling approximately 20 acres of the land owned by the city of Casa Grande. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll pause for any questions.
Just a question, Larry. So I know, I know you went over the history a little bit, and we had, it's 84 acres.
Right.
So how, so how does this come about? So they came to us with a letter of intent for just 20 acres.
They initially came to the city with a letter of intent for 12.
For 12, right. And then they expanded to 20.
Correct.
So the remaining, whatever, 60 acres is still open. It's, I mean, it, we're just going to still market that and just kind of see what goes through.
Certainly be at the discretion of the mayor and council, but we could either market it, we can continue to hold it.
Right, okay.
And I did feel to point out that we do have a bit of a site depiction showing the across streets of Quartzon and Thornton Road. They're just south of the Dave White available.
Could also expand the wastewater treatment plant.
There, we could have many options with this particular site, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I wanted to comment that letter of condition was put on the end about the closeness to the water reclamation facility.
As I told you, my first house I bought on Quartzon Road, I had to sign a notice that, hey, you're, you're near the water reclamation facility. The other thing is, so this will have to go through zoning and everything for the actual site plan. And they're intending to put multifamily on there, which, which is good. What if that doesn't pan out at some point during the process?
There has been some discussions specifically about a clawback provision in the agreement that has not been completed. When I say completed, we have not finalized the final terms to that. But again, that could be an option if the mayor and council, at your pleasure, for us to add that clawback provision into the, into the acquisition agreement.
That'd be on their side. Yeah, I was just curious about what would happen.
Okay. Any other questions for Larry? All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3339, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the sale of city-owned real property generally located at the northwest corner of Quartzon Road and Thornton Road, Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing expenditure of public funds for reasonable and customary closing costs, and authorizing the execution of documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3339 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestead.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, item I2. This is ordinance number 3343, proposal from Ellison Mills.
Thank you. Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC Wilmington Joint Venture to provide construction manager risks, construction phase services, and amount not to exceed $3,648,636. And this is for the construction of Thornton Road between Selma Highway and Peters Road. Staff has been working with the contractor. We did GMP number one and GMP number two on this project. Those were separate. this project. Those were separate phases of the project that we've already done the guaranteed maximum price for. So this is our last guaranteed maximum price, number three, for this project. And we did identify in the RCA the scope of that work that's included in that GMP. And again, we did that for a lot of different reasons, but mainly because we wanted the GMPs to match our funding availability in our budget. And the GMP 2 took care of everything that we had budgeted in '22, and now we have the new funds in fiscal year '23 that we are finishing this project for. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Matt.
Just today, they're starting the first one, the first phase, right? Or we're supposed to?
No, Phase 1, or the GMP number one is already completed. That work was finished. That was the tiling of the irrigation across the frontage of Lucid. GMP number two, they're under construction now.
That's the Thornton Road one.
And then GMP number three will be the items that will start construction here in the very near future. But they were scheduled to close the road today to start their major effort. We postponed that due to the weather.
Due to the power lines being down.
They had all that equipment out there. Was anything damaged?
How many poles went down?
It's about a mile's worth of poles.
But as far as Ellison Mills?
On the west side.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. So Ellison Mills got their equipment out there already?
Yes, but I heard no reports of any damage to any of their equipment.
Okay. So it's just going to be delayed a couple of days, then?
That's correct.
Till they get Peters cleaned up?
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to close Thornton Road with Peters Road closed as well. We need, we need to work on the agreements that we have with the businesses.
You need Lucid workers to get to work.
Pardon?
You need Lucid workers to get to work.
Yes.
So they're going to use the Peters entrance, then, when we shut down?
That's correct.
Okay, alright. Any other comments or questions? Alright, seeing none, I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3343. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Ellison Mills Construction, Wilmington Construction Joint Venture to provide construction manager at risk construction services for additional work on the Thornton Road Improvement Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 3343 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Alright, next item is item I-3. Kevin, this is yours, too.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract for construction manager at risk pre-construction services to Aiken Gardner Construction LLC for the Quartzon Sewer Relief Project for a contract amount of $73,745 plus a $10,000 contingency for an amount not to exceed $83,745. Currently, the existing Quartzon sewer line serves approximately 50% of our community for collection services to our wastewater treatment plant. That line is at capacity, and we need to expand that sewer system within Quartzon Road. We are currently at about 60% plan set of the design of that new sewer line, so this is the perfect time to bring Aiken Gardner in so that they can start to work with the design engineers for final design efforts and work on that final GMP that we'll bring back to city council. Now, I will let city council know that similar to what we did on Thornton Road with multiple GMPs, we'll probably be taking advantage of that opportunity to do multiple GMPs on the Quartzon Road project. So you won't have one guaranteed maximum price, you'll probably have several. And what that's going to do for us is it allows us to get approval to spend money for long lead items so that we can order the materials for the project so that that does not keep us from moving forward on the project when we actually need the equipment to be here. Some of these items are, you know, a year out on ordering before they can be delivered. So we'll be taking advantage of that so that we can move this project forward as quickly as we can. We did have three firms submit to the request for qualifications that we published for this project, and all three companies that submitted proposals or qualifications were very qualified, capable contractors. But after our review of each of those companies, we determined that Aiken Gardner was the company that would best serve our needs for this project, through the value they'll bring to the project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, just for edification for the constituents, what is a GNP?
It's a guaranteed maximum price. So what that does-
So it's GMP?
It's GMP.
GMP, okay.
Guaranteed maximum price. The contractor guarantees that the price will be that or less. And then obviously, we work with the contractor as we finish the project, and any savings, we keep those savings.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
You go, Matt.
Alright, seeing none, can I get an ordinance, ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number, excuse me, ordinance number 3344. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Aiken Gardner Construction LLC to provide pre-construction services as a construction manager at risk for the Quartzon Relief Sewer Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the ordinance number 3344 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Alright, we'll move to item L, which is our public hearings, public meetings, and we have, I think, one left on the agenda. That would be L-1. Jaclyn?
Hi, Mayor, members of the council. Next item is for a request for a zone change from planned area development, commercial office, and R-3 to planned area development for a medium-density residential project located on approximately 17.69 acres at the southwest corner of Cottonwood Lane and Pert Road. And the proposal is for a build-to-rent project for 209 units with an approximate density of 11.81 dwelling units per acre. And the conceptual site plan is currently under review by staff. In reviewing the P-80, these items are the review criteria, and the staff report goes into detail that was attached to the agenda today. I will be going over the two highlighted items here. So with regards to the general plan, this land use category is community corridor. It allows for planned area development as well as multifamily residential development at a gross density of 25 dwelling units per acre. This proposed development is at 11.81 dwelling units per acre. And one of the community corridor goals is promote high-density residential uses along urban corridors and near major commercial centers. And one of the action steps is to encourage higher-density residential developments on infill sites and along key corridors. And this meets that criteria. With regards to the zoning ordinance, this will be subject to the 2021 residential design standards for P-80s. This covers various requirements. However, one I wanted to point out was that there is additional setbacks for multifamily adjacent to single-family development, and that includes a 25-foot setback and a 15-foot landscape buffer. And this is, will be part of the major site plan review criteria and has, will be part of that review. Excuse me. With regards to notification, applications and review were sent out to property owners and HOAs within 300 feet earlier this year. A notice was in the dispatch for both the planning commission and city council meeting, and notices were sent out, noticing the public hearings to property owners within 300 feet, as well as a sign posted on the site. Staff did not receive any questions or comments. So with that, planning commission, on a 7-0 vote, recommended city council to approve the zone change request from R-3, commercial office, and planned area development to planned area development for medium-density residential with the following condition of record, and this is the right-of-way requirement. I'd be happy to answer any questions, council may have.
So it was a 25-foot setback plus 15, right? So it's total 45?
Including 15.
It's including. Does that mean plus? Or is that included in?
25 total.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Matt?
In the setback area? I was thinking about that, the 25 feet. What else is going to be then? Just landscaping and then drainage, or is there a trail system in there? You know, I know you haven't done the whole site plan yet, but...
Yes, I can point that out, though. Councilmember Herman, they are actually, are proposing a trail throughout that site area. It will be landscaped. It'll be an amenity for the community.
I was hoping you would say that.
For the, they may be able to clarify if it will be open to anyone or just the site.
Just the residents of that community. But it'll be like a recreation area.
Correct.
Alright. Anybody else have any questions?
I don't want to make that look good, so I'll agree.
Okay. Alright, seeing no questions, then. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to anyone in the audience who would like to address item L-1. Is there anyone here? Okay. Yes? Yeah, go ahead, please. Just please state your name and your address for our records. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Tom Galvin with Rose Law Group. Just here on behalf of the applicant, so I'm not sure if you were calling us up specifically or not. Just want to say that staff did a great job with that presentation, gave virtually the presentation that we would have given tonight as well. Just to clarify on that issue regarding the trail, yes, there was a trail proposed for the western side of the property and the southern side. As I understand it, there will be a wall that will be constructed, so it'll just be for the benefit of the community, but that's how I understand it at the moment. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, anyone else from the audience? This is a public hearing, so the floor is still open. Alright, seeing no one rush up, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll call for a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.323.1. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 in its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development, commercial, commercial office, and multifamily residential R-3 to planned area development, medium-density residential on property located at the southwest corner of Cottonwood Lane and Pert Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.323.1 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright. That concludes most of our business. We have an executive session,
but before that, I had rerouted the reports, so we'll start with reports. And Bob, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Only one thing. Mr. Rains, as he always does, sends out an interesting weekly update, and last week's issue included the police department's Stay Connected newsletter. I was extremely impressed with it. A lot of good information, especially on the department members that had been honored for different awards. Also, a good write-up on Chaplain Bob Cornelius's retirement. My only regret with this is that we don't have a guaranteed, more extensive way of distributing this. I'd be thrilled if I was sure that every household in Casa Grande got a copy of this. It develops pride that's well-deserved in our police department, and I wish there was a way we could get it out there in a larger fashion, but Chief did a good job all the way around. That's all.
Lisa?
To kind of piggyback on the police department, they're still busy doing some great things, but I just want to recommend, you know, the citizens to go on and take a look at the new online reporting system. You know, it's nice, Chief, for you to free up some of the time of, you know, for what the officers are doing that need their attention, but, you know, just to kind of highlight some of the acceptable types of incidents, you know, shoplifting, criminal damage, fraudulent use of credit card, lost property, identity theft, stolen bicycles harassing. You know, there's an online reporting system. I think it's great for the community to get on. I hope the response time is going to be pretty quick on these, you know, because of course, this is where people, if they put it on, they don't hear anything, you know, they'll get frustrated. But I'm happy to see that we're doing this just to free up some of the time, too, for some of the other things like crimes in progress, vehicle accidents, and other things. So good job on that. The, I wanted to kind of give, I know the mayor and I have talked about the homeless overnight shelter program. You know, we are still moving forward with the churches. This is something I know I've talked to you all about for a long time, but we're making some progress. We went several weeks ago and met with the Chandler I Help program, and so it's something that we're looking to implement here with the churches, and we're making some progress. So we have quite a few churches on board, so we're hoping maybe once, at least once a week, we'll be able to do an overnight shelter. We're getting all the details finalized, but if any of you go to a church, and if they're interested in helping us participate in this, you know, please let me know so we can follow up with that church. But we're really making some progress. Of course, we would have loved to have that now since it's so hot, but of course, winter's going to be coming up, and people are going to be needing shelter in the winter as well. So excited about that. And just, you know, with all the damage with the storms yesterday, I'm sure you're all seeing everything that's happened in Eloy in Arizona City, and I, you know, just feel so bad, you know, for everything going on there. So just thinking about all those people and just hope they get their power turned on by today. So I think that's it for me, Mayor.
Alright, well, thank you, Lisa. Mr. Powell?
Well, I had quite a trip. I traveled through eight states, and all the eight states I went through had a lot of water, and in the northern parts of the states, a lot of foliage. Beautiful. I went through Arizona when I left, but New Mexico, Texas, Louisiana, Tennessee, Georgia, Mississippi, or Alabama. Alabama is where my, our family had a place there in northern Alabama for a long, long time. And so it was really happy for me to go and visit there, and it's about three miles from the Tennessee River where their home is. And at one point in time on the road analysis, they kind of dropped out the name of Powell. And this time, as I drove back into town, they had welcomed to the town of Powell, Alabama, and they had fire department and all the different things going, which are really good. One of the things that I got a kick out of, my grandfather, top of the mountain where they all lived at, close to the river, was moonshiners when he first went into Alabama. And he could tell stories forever about his experiences with them. But one thing that was interesting, he took all of his male children down to the Tennessee River, and he had them take their shoes off and walk across it because actually, the TVA- TVA hadn't finished up yet, they didn't have electricity, but he knew it was coming, so he wanted to tell everybody that his kids walked on water. And they were able to do that in a short period after that. But he, as I say, when I went back there to visit the family, it was really enjoyable, and there's a, they called it the big house. They built it in nineteen nineteen, and it's over a hundred years old, and my cousin's been doing a lot of work on it. And I told her, you're sitting on a fortune here. She's filled all these rooms with fancy stuff and whatever, but it was, it was really fun to go, and I had, everybody in the car was kinned to me or they're about to leave, and so it, we had a good time. And as I say, that south is a beautiful place, and as you go through the, especially up toward the northern part of the different states, every one of them, and they'll have these thirty-foot, forty-foot-high veneers of wood and trees that have been put up. The tree growth is immaculate to see, and we went to a cemetery, and we didn't know whose it was. Well, my family had a great big one that had the name on the pallet, so there was another place they took us to, and we were looking at some of the different markers on the graves, and I didn't want to brag about it, but several of them had Army of Alabama, and it was the Civil War. But anyway, it's all over and done with now, so.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Beth?
Thanks, great. Exciting news, kind of. School's starting this week, which I'm sure Mr. Lavender will tell us all about, but that means the Youth Commission's annual retreat is moved up by a couple weeks, so we're doing that this weekend, and we have a neat, be my first time with some of the new advisors, so we're excited, and we're going to have a meeting at the rec center, they've been helping us a lot, and then we're going to have a little scavenger hunt downtown and eat downtown and go back to the rec center. So it should be a great day for the Youth Commission, and wish me luck and pray for us. And I was going to talk about the police reporting, but Lisa hit it, very good. It's a neat thing to have. Kind of a, not a personal thing, but I just want to commend the police department, Public Works, Animal Control, which is part of the police department. There was a dog stuck in a storm drain by my house, and the poor guy was crying. I came home early in the morning, and I hear this crying, and it wasn't our dogs for once. So I saw him, and he was stuck in there, it was a big dog, stuck in there pretty good, so I called the non-emergency police numbers before we had online reporting, Chief, so. And a police officer came over, because I felt bad, I mean, the guy was right there, you could see him. And then the police officer came, and we tried to open up the grate, but it was pretty stuck. So he says, hey, I'm going to stay here until, and they got Public Works to come over and Animal Control, and they rescued that dog out of the storm drain, so it's a good small-town story still, and I appreciate the efforts of everyone. I mean, it's a dog, but the poor guy was just crying right there, so.
Bet you slept good that night.
I did, yes. So I appreciate all the work, Chief, and Kevin, your department, and it was just great to see that teamwork. Got it done. Thanks.
Donna?
I want to know if he adopted the dog.
We are full of dogs at my house.
You know, it's been kind of a quiet couple weeks with it being so hot. I did have the opportunity to go to HOHP, their new location, and they gave me a tour. They are, I couldn't even tell you how many volunteers were in there. There were so many people in there helping put down the flooring and stuff like that, so hopefully, they'll be open real soon. They have not changed any services during the move, and so they're just doing a great job, so congratulations to Kim. Shout-out, school is starting next week, and the mayor's reading program is starting again, and we need volunteers. It's the twenty-fifth anniversary, so anybody that would give up an hour a month to read to some of the elementary schools, please make sure to contact the library, because we really want some good volunteers this year.
We're on the line, sign up, too.
And they have the online so that for winter visitors that are not yet back, you can go ahead and sign up, and you can do that virtually as well. And just, you know, hats off to everybody, including our departments that have, you know, tried to help out Eloy and Arizona City and Toltec. It just, I have staff that have been without any air since yesterday at seven o'clock, and they don't anticipate it coming back before Wednesday in some areas, and so hats off to Mayor Powell and all the people over there that have really been working hard, so. Thank you.
Jeff?
Well, it is an exciting time with schools starting and our new teachers. We had a meeting last Wednesday with all of them, and we've got an energetic group, and for the first time in a long time, we're pretty much fully staffed with all our teachers. So be careful as you drive by our schools, and ditto to all the comments on our public safety as well as the support of our communities.
Thank you, Jeff. I know nobody wants to hear a COVID report, but COVID is up, so I just want to remind everybody to please, you know, do your safety precautions, you know, protect yourself, do whatever you think you need to do to try and, you know, keep, wash your hands and all that good stuff, and if you feel sick, please stay home. Don't go to work, and don't go to the store and spreading around, because it is out there. There were five hundred and seventy-seven positive cases just in the last thirty days, so, which at one point in time, we were at thirty-four, so.
Speak last year.
No, no, you're done.
No, I'm not.
Then you better go.
Okay, I'm ready to go. I can fill you in on the stories they tell in Alabama. And my dad was telling me about when he was a young man, he'd gone out in the woods to hunt, and he had one bullet left in the rifle, and he'd been barking squirrels, and if you don't know what that is, it's shoot the bark below the squirrel, the squirrel falls, and too bad for the squirrel. But he was walking along, and he had that rifle, and he came to a Y in the road, and on one side was a bear, and the other side was a lion standing there, and he didn't know what to do, so he pulled out his knife and held it at the end of the barrel, pulled the trigger, split the bullet, and killed both of them. And it scared a bunch of wild turkeys that were in a tree that were right next to where it happened, that they started flapping their wings, and everybody was ready to fly away. So he ran over and grabbed a hold of that, and he was flying out over a lake, and he thought, gosh, I don't want to fall on the ground, so he let go, and when he stood back up, a button popped off his shirt and killed a deer sitting there drinking water. Maybe it was true.
Mostly.
It's a pretty tall tale.
On that note, just a reminder, as school is going back into session, please watch your speeds through the school zones. There are specifics, signs that are usually posted out for, I think it's ten, is it fifteen? Fifteen miles an hour. So be cognizant of those, because I'm sure that we will have some enforcement out there, especially in the first few days of the school year, because we want to remind people to watch their speeds. I did have, I did want to make sure everybody knows, we're going to have a survey for, to name our transit system. So that survey actually should be out by tomorrow, and so you can go on to the city's website if you want to enter that, I won't call it a contest, but it is a survey-
Yes.
-to see what the community thinks in terms of naming our transit system. So that is available online at the city's website, and then if you go up into the search section, I'm sure there's a, there's going to be a banner on the website, but if you want to search, just search transit survey, and then it'll take you right to it. Also, just a reminder that we've got a bunch of, a bunch of programs this week. We're going to have, actually, the Ton of Odom Nation is going to be here in our city councils on Wednesday, the twentieth, so the Northern District, which I can never pronounce their name, SIF, SIF ODUK, something like that, they will be hosting their nation here in our chambers, so that's kind of interesting. That's at nine o'clock, if any of you are interested. And then we've got, next Monday, I've got what's called the Arizona Regional Talent. It's the mayor's education roundtable is the sponsor of it, and so we're inviting all the superintendents, all of the school superintendents, plus mayors, will all be at this roundtable. It's about a three-hour meeting, and it's going to talk about Arizona talent and working together. I'm going to talk a little bit more about it on Friday at the July Biz, the Chamber of Biz Outlook Luncheon, so you'll hear a little more about it there. But that's, the Biz Outlook Lunch is Friday at eleven o'clock at the property. And we've got a downtown redevelopment task force meeting this Wednesday. We did boards and commissions interviews tonight for planning and zoning, so we'll have, we'll fill that one seat here immediately, the one that was vacated by Mr. Dugan. And then just some housing information, there was an article in today's paper on the Arizona, in the Arizona Business Journal, and that Arizona housing deficit in the last, since two thousand twelve, has increased one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven percent. That equates to one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three homes that we are short. Don't ask me how they calculate it, but it's based on the number of jobs, based on the number of houses that should be in place. So it's a huge number, and even if they started working on it immediately, it'd take us twenty years to do it, but it would generate twenty thousand jobs over that twenty years in terms of the forecast for new housing. The biggest thing they mentioned was, however, that municipalities need to address the issues of affordability, and they said municipalities, even though we don't build houses. So they were throwing us under the bus. And then more density. Now, density, we do have control over, so that's one of the issues that they think the cities need to address, so I just kind of throw that out there. It's now making, you know, more national news in terms of our housing, so. That's all I have tonight. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. Motion to move into executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we will move into executive session. We'll start the exec session at eight oh five, so we'll give you four minutes to get out of the chambers.